Well, thank you all for joining us for this September 2nd meeting of the Fortuna City Council. If you'll silence your electronic devices and then join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we get a roll call?
Councilmember Conley?
Present.
Councilmember Diaz?
Present.
Councilmember Stevens?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
Here.
Mayor Johnson?
Here. All right. We have moved public comment to the end of the agenda tonight, and our first order of business will be the consent calendar where we have three items, minutes of the August 18th meeting, reported disbursements, and a bingo permit application for Ducks Unlimited. Does anybody have anything they want to pull?
I was not here for the last minute or meeting, so I can't approve the minutes. But I'll make a motion to approve B and C.
Okay. We have a second. Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve items B and C. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? None.
Mayor, just as a point of order, it is appropriate for somebody to vote on the minutes if they've read and reviewed the minutes.
Okay.
Well, we will now entertain a motion for item A.
I make a motion to approve item A since I was here last meeting. Sorry.
A second? All right. I have a motion and a second for item A. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? None. All right. We have approved the-
I'm gonna abstain now.
Okay. So we can move on to our discussion items. Our first item is the City of Fortuna Revenue Generation Ad Hoc Committee update and discussion. And we have a staff report.
Yes. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. So I'm going to be providing an update on the Revenue Generation Ad Hoc Committee. We also have our River Lodge Manager Jennifer Lorenzer, who's going to be giving some information on the River Lodge. So just as a way of background, on April 21st, the staff brought forward kind of the budget outlook and presented that to the City Council. Some of the key issues that were explored were the limited investment in vital services, the below-market wages across multiple departments. And as an example, we were 20% to 28% lower for a police sergeant, and the rising turnover rate, which is over 40% for last fiscal year. And so in response to those, the council created the Revenue Generation Ad Hoc Committee. And the committee met on April 30th for the first time to review the general fund and reduce city services option. And then those findings were presented to the council on May 19th. And the ad hocs committee's recommendation from at that meeting was that investing in city services by reducing other general fund services was not practical. And so the committee recommended pursuing a sales tax measure in November of 2026 and invest in public opinion research, which the council authorized on May 19th as well. And then in addition, at that council meeting on May 19th, council member brought up and expressed interest in learning more about the River Lodge and why it costs the general fund so much to operate. And so that's why that was what the committee met last on, was to explore the River Lodge a little bit further. And so I'm going to turn it over to Jennifer Lorenzer to go through some of the background of the River Lodge, and then I'll take it back over to go through the financials and just some options to close it out.
Good evening, Mayor Johnson and City Council Members. River Lodge was built for the City of Fortuna by a group of individuals who cared deeply for their community. Established in 1998, River Lodge was created to address a need, excuse me, written, or I'm sorry, I'm trying to read up there, within the Fortuna community. Through the generous support of local donors and sponsors, a welcoming space was developed to serve as a gathering place for residents of the Eel River Valley and surrounding areas. And River Lodge has proudly served the community for 27 years. Outside of River Lodge, a plaque commemorates the dedicated citizens whose efforts were made to bring the building a reality. Events held at River Lodge include trainings, conferences, quote retreats, weddings, memorials, baby showers, club meetings, and fundraisers. The City of Fortuna offers these groups a reliable local space to fundraise, meet, and celebrate strengthening community ties. Current management has been operating the River Lodge since 2021. Since 2021, staff has increased the number of events held each year, and staff has steadily increased revenue each year and remained under budget by as much as $40,000. During the 2023-2024 fiscal year, River Lodge events were attended by approximately 18,872 attendees. During the 2024-2025 fiscal year, River Lodge events were attended by approximately 18,628 attendees. This next slide highlights what River Lodge is doing to boost bookings and raise awareness about our beautiful facility. We have taken to social media campaigns, trying to post regular events and behind-the-scenes content so that we can build a stronger online presence. We are working on building partnerships with local businesses like the hotels in our area. And I also attend T and M meetings, and we talk in length at those meetings of what we can do to increase the events there. We're working to share posts and videos and about events so that people can see what goes on there and hopefully provide and build excitement for future events. We provide emails to some of our past vendors to keep in touch and make sure that they are willing to come back to River Lodge and hold their events on a regular annual basis. And then we are also working on boosting the River Lodge website, which was just overhauled recently, and I'm sorry, I lost my place, and to practice, and that is an improvement of practicing the improvement of our website's content, structure, and visibility so that we can rank higher in Google and when other people do searches for River Lodge or facilities in our area. River Lodge staff has five dedicated staff members. We have myself, the full-time Conference Center Manager, and I've been with River Lodge for six years. We have one full-time Conference Center Coordinator that's been with us for two years. And then we have three Conference Center worker positions with a combined 22 years with River Lodge, and one very important person is missing from these photos, and he has been with River Lodge for over 20 years. River Lodge staff are trusted by over 45 local groups while providing event continuity and expertise. We strive to make a personal connection with each renter that comes through our doors. And that's all I have. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions?
Thank you. And we can come back if you think of any more questions as I go through. So the ad hoc committee did also take a little bit of a deeper dive on the financials. Jennifer touched on some of it, but I just wanted to provide for the council just a little bit of a deeper insight into the financials of the River Lodge. So 21-22, I'm just going to kind of focus on the bottom numbers for now. That was obviously the tail end of COVID. We weren't able to, you know, be fully open at the River Lodge, and so that's why events and revenue were down in 21-22. In 22-23, a lot of those bookings that, you know, or the events that were going to be held in 21-22 ended up getting rescheduled for 22-23. And so that's kind of why that revenue year was a little bit higher than 23-24. And then in 24-25, we had the big jump because of the fee schedule increases. So some recent fee schedule increases, you can see 2% increase from this last year, no increase in 24-25, and fiscal year 23-24 was the largest. We really altered the rate structure and increased fees between 20% and 30%. And then 22-23 had a 10% increase, and 21-22 had no increase. And it takes about a year for us to really see those revenues. When somebody books the facility, they get it at whatever the rate is then, even if it's booked for a year in advance. So we typically see about a year delay, which is even though, so even though fiscal year 23-24 was when the rates, fee increases were adopted, it really took until 24-25 to start seeing those fees come in at those increased prices. And then one other note, on fiscal year 25-26, we were basing it off 23-24's number of events. As Jennifer had mentioned, 24-25, we saw an increased amount of events, especially weddings. And so if that trend continues, we do anticipate that revenue would come in over about $20,000 from what we had budgeted in 25-26. And then here is just a visual of kind of how the revenue is broken up. The River Lodge just base rental fees make up about 64%. The kitchen makes up 8%. Linens 4%. Catering services 2%. Wedding package is 16%, and the bridal and craft fair 3% each. And then on the expense side, you can see it's been growing steadily from fiscal year 21-22 to 25-26, with a large increase from 24-25 to 25-26. And that's really because of four main things. So park workers' pay distributions had to change to account for the added time spent at the River Lodge. The facility's getting older, and so there's more time that the parks workers are having to spend there to maintain the facility. The budget also includes more for building repairs and maintenance. Again, as the facility gets older, we're finding that we're just having to put more into the facility. Wages and benefits increased due to negotiations primarily for the stipends. So that was $25,000 impact. And then inflationary increases, utilities, liability insurance, things we don't really have control over, was again for about another $25,000. So again, a visual of kind of how that's broken up. Wages 44% and benefits 22%. Supply 7%. Bridal craft fair 1%. Maintenance and repairs 11%. Utilities 13%. And then others 2. So we put these together, revenues and expenses, and as you can see here, the amount shown for each year is the amount that the general fund has essentially had to provide to the River Lodge. Over the last five years, it is nearly $1 million, more in expenses than revenues from the River Lodge. And just one note, that does not include the standing project for 25-26, which is funded out of Measure E revenues. And so then, one additional question that came up from our ad hoc committee meeting was, does, you know, does the River Lodge bring in transient occupancy tax? And so we explored that a little bit. I put in the chart here of our TOT revenues over the last five years. You can see it's trending down. As Jennifer had mentioned, our events really have been trending up, so we didn't see any direct correlation there. We reached out to a hotel owner, and they say most of their business comes from PG&E subcontractors, Caltrans contractors, and some other transient workers. So we estimated somewhere in the 5% of all hotel stays in Fortuna could be attributed to the River Lodge, which would equate to about $35,000 in TOT revenue. So the ad hoc really came up with kind of three options for the council to consider. Status quo, continue funding with the general fund, enhance the facility, invest and continue to invest in upgrades and marketing, potentially look at fee increases to help reduce the amount that the general fund is providing to the River Lodge. And then the third option would be to lease to a third party. And this could be done in a number of different ways. We could issue an RFP, or we could identify local external organizations who would be interested in running the facility, and that would ideally eliminate the entirety of the general fund's support. So that concludes staff's presentation. Jennifer and I are happy to answer any questions, and I'll turn it back over to the mayor.
I got a couple of questions. Have we had the opportunity to do a rate study? Was that done when the fee increases? So we're at a competitive point?
Yes, we were. Yes, we were fairly competitive with the facilities. It's hard because there aren't any local facilities as large as ours besides the barns, which mainly hold weddings, and they are considerably higher than we are. So there is, I do believe there is room to make some more increases, but I don't know that going about that real quickly is such a good idea.
Okay. Any other?
Yeah, I'm curious, has the facility, like pre-COVID, like in 2019 or earlier, did it ever, was it ever revenue positive?
That's a good question. And as far as I could tell, the River Lodge has never made money or even broken even. It's always relied on the general fund. It's grown, as you can see, over the years, but it was really never been a money-making entity.
And then of the 64% of the revenue that's coming as rental fees, what percent of that is weddings? If you guys had to just ballpark guess?
The weddings was separate.
Well, I saw the bridal package was a separate category. I was wondering if they was also like-
The wedding package, yeah.
Yeah, rental fees was also weddings paid a rental fee in addition.
They do not. The wedding package includes the rental fees.
So weddings are roughly 16% then?
Correct. Yep.
Any other questions or comments? I'll open up for public comment.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor and Council Members. My name is Connie Deco-Magne. I'm the President of the Civil Ground Jury Association of Humboldt County. Full disclosure, my daughter is the events coordinator at the River Lodge. But that's how I found out that the River Lodge could accommodate our chapter's end-of-term dinner. On June 30th, 2025, our chapter held its dinner where present and past civil ground jurors enjoyed a fabulous dinner and in the coho room of the River Lodge. The members were delighted to see this beautiful facility and how functional it is. They relaxed while enjoying the view. The Civil Ground Jurors Association of California was also mentioned in our chapters in the State Journal. So it's kind of being advertised throughout the state, and that could bring in conferences here, and that could bring in revenue. I was going to suggest this at the state conference this year in San Luis Obispo, at the Hilton Conference Center. If the River Lodge is still available, this will bring over 100 people from all over the state to our county and to the city of Fortuna. They will be, there will be a boon to the city and county as these people frequent restaurants, hotels, motels, and shops. I believe the River Lodge has a bright and productive future. I would hate to see the city lose out. And I would recommend publicizing throughout the state and beyond, you know, other states that are close for any kind of conventions, because it's a perfect place. So I think that's about it, and thank you very much for listening. I hope I got everything.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this item?
Good evening, Mayor and Council Members. I just wanted to thank Jennifer and Erin for putting that together. I think it was very well done. Looking at the three options, I just would really like the council to consider what the future could look like if in the hands of a different organization, the city stepping back and not having control over their rentals or what's exactly happening with the Conference Center, I think is really important. If we're doing an RFP and having somebody come in and try to reinvent the wheel, we don't know what that looks like. And if you were to go with that direction, I think it's important to make sure certain securities are in place so that the Conference Center doesn't become something it wasn't intended to be. One of the slides that Jennifer included was a plaque that had all the names and organizations that donated to build the River Lodge. And so it was donated and sponsored by community members for community members, and I think that's its long-term intent, so thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Johnson and Council Members. Thank you for this time. I am the Conference Center Coordinator at River Lodge, and I've been there for two years. And Jennifer and I have gotten some truly beautiful comments over the fact that we have had steady staff, especially with she and I being there, and I'm not trying to brag, but having consistent staff. And, I mean, I look around, I see Sandy Dale, and I see Becky, and I see Lori. They do annual events every year that are very important to the community, and the River Lodge really is. And some of the compliments that we've gotten is that we've had steady staff, and we do personal touches that I don't know if a company came in would do those. And we truly love our jobs. I mean, there's not a day that I'm, you know, that I don't want to come to work. I put all my all into it, and if you would give us the chance to try and figure out how to really make the River Lodge grow as it's already existing, because I think it would just be detrimental to lose the River Lodge. And I'm not just saying that because I work here. You know, I'll be fine. I can go find another job. But I've really grown to love the City of Fortuna and all the members that come. And when Jennifer and I were putting this presentation together, more her than me, but we realized we had 45 annual events that we do every year, and I could probably tell you every month that they do it and the special touches they want, and I just really love being at the River Lodge. So thank you.
Thank you. Any?
Good evening, Council Members. My name is Sandy Dale, and I think I know most of you from Fortuna High School, but I'm speaking here tonight a little bit differently in a different context. I do work for Fortuna High, but I also work for the Department of Education, and I run a contract for professional development for teachers, and that's what brings me to the River Lodge each year. My job is to facilitate professional development conferences, some of them small, some of them large, and I do about six events, six pretty large events a year. One of them happens at the River Lodge. So I'm a little bit versed in conferences and things like that. One of the things that I know from my work is that the facility itself is typically the loss leader in the venture or in the contract. If I work with a hotel and I rent their facility, I get the facility for free, but I have to make a certain number of rooms, room numbers, so that I can earn that free facility. And I've also worked with other standalone facilities. I don't know if they generate a profit, but I'm willing to bet that they probably don't. One of the things, I really appreciated all the research that was done in the report, but I was wondering about the Sequoia Conference Center. It is a standalone facility itself, and I was wondering, do we have any information as to whether that venue also makes a profit? And I'm not sure if it does, but that's just something I questioned. There's, I also enjoyed the research that you did about the other income that's generated with the hotel tax. I know myself, I held an event here just a few weeks ago in August, and that generated about a $25,000 hotel room, or hotel bill, and about a $15,000 vendor bill. So those are some of the things that generated income for our community, and so there were some taxes and, you know, some money paid out on that behalf. I would like to, it's really hard to capture that, you know? How much are people spending at the local restaurants? How much are they filling up their cars before they leave or using hotels? And I did appreciate the research that was done on the one hotel, but we have a couple of others here as well. So there's those things that, you know, that I think that there's a lot that can go into this. I also want to say that I survey the participants of my conference every single year. The number one thing that they have to say about coming to Fortuna is that they would come again and again and again. Remember, these folks are coming from places like Fresno and further south, so they come from all areas of the state, willing to travel over 12 hours to come for a five-day conference. And again, the first comment is, what a beautiful venue. We love it in Fortuna. As a matter of fact, the Department of Education asked me to move this conference, because it wasn't really accessible by everyone in the state. And to that, I went to the people that attended it, and they wrote letters and said, no way, move this conference, keep it here at Fortuna, which, of course, I'm really happy about. But I do want to say that that's how strongly people feel about this venue. And I do think it would be great if we could continue to market that aspect of it. It's a gorgeous facility in a gorgeous location, and it really allows for a lot of reflection. And, ooh, that's my time? Is that what that is? Sorry. I don't even know. Okay. Can I go really quickly? I'll, to summarize, I really urge you to consider option one or two, and knowing how hard it is to keep up a website myself, I would say some professional help in that area might be, might be an important aspect to look at. So thank you for your time. Sorry, I didn't realize that there was a time.
Thank you. Any other comment? We did have some that came in electronically, and while we're not reading them right now, they will be, they were given to the clerk, and they will be a part of the meeting record. So they are being taken into account. Any discussion for this?
I could, Sue has some comments?
I would like to know what the people who wrote in are saying and what are they thinking. I would just really caution you on giving up the River Lodge. I know it's a drain on the general fund. I think it could be marketed better. We've talked about marketing it for years, but we never really do it. I don't know what that looks like. That's not the business I'm in, but I think that it should have some research. We should just not, just be careful. Go slow. Don't throw in the towel. Think about it. If you let a third party in there and they destroy the reputation that we have now, then it's really going to be hard to get it back. So if that third party bails out or is only there for two years or three years, and then they don't offer the service that we do, and then we try to invite people back to the River Lodge, then they're not going to come. So just do some more research, take your time, look at some marketing. That would be what I would ask, and I would like to hear what the people who wrote in said.
I have a comment.
Yes?
I truly believe River Lodge is one of Fortuna's gems. It's a beautiful building. Every event I've ever been to or have held there, the view is remarkable there, the venue is beautiful, and I am not willing to consider not having River Lodge there. I do think it would be good to invest some money, you know, send brochures, get to the Bay Area, get to Redding, get to, you know, the surrounding areas, see how we can do, you know, advertising outside our own area, and see what we can bring in. I'm willing to invest in the beautiful building that we have. I just can't, I just can't give it up. That's too important to Fortuna.
I would say also that I think we could work with the Tourism and Marketing Committee and Humboldt Lodging Alliance and look to see what marketing opportunities are not being captured. I know when I've traveled out of town for conferences and things, I take brochures on "Visit Fortuna" from the Chamber of Commerce and distribute them at Redwood Division Meetings down the south, handed more out here so we can bring people in. I've worked to get the Redwood Division Meeting in Fortuna so that we could show it off. And I know that the people at the River Lodge did a great job in sprucing it up and assisting wherever we needed and thinking of things that I didn't think of because my mind was elsewhere, but they covered all the bases, so. And I think we're missing something in our partnership with Humboldt Lodging Alliance and what we can capture. Did you have something, Council Member?
Yeah, I think the River Lodge is a staple in our community. I think, like you said, 45 events that it handles every year. I've been to probably half of those at least, and think that not only would it take away from those members that would like to go to that event, celebrations of life that I've been there before, it's kind of like the Parks and Rec Department. It doesn't really normally bring a profit. We've increased some fee schedules on that to try to help the understanding and the bleeding in that, but it's almost like we wouldn't put fences around our parks to say, no, you can't use them, we don't make our money. The River Lodge has kind of become that part of Fortuna where it's part of Fortuna and it's part of many people's lives and- it's part of many people's lives and culture to go to those events or to have the celebration of life there, that it would be like boarding up the parks and telling the people, "You can't go to the park just because we don't make enough money." So I think we need to put what we can to make sure the River Lodge can concede, succeed as best as we can, but it just needs to be part of Fortuna.
Thank you. Any other?
Yeah, I think that if the ultimate goal is to bring people to Fortuna, I think that it's important to keep it and invest in something like this, that it's obviously working, it's bringing in people, it's bringing in events, it's just the revenue will never be the same as the expenses, because the majority of the expenses are obviously wages and benefits, and we have no control over the benefits, and they will continue to increase, but I think that this is something that is bringing in additional traffic that we are not even counting on or looking at as part of that revenue comparison, so.
I can throw in my two cents, you know. So I guess, and I think, as everyone has kind of pointed out, the River Lodge is quite the jewel of a facility, you know, it's a beautiful location, you know, handsome building, you know, I, you know, I had my own wedding reception there twenty years ago, you know, I've got fond memories of that, and, you know, band concerts my daughters had there, you know, for school band, but I think the, I think as council members, we have to make some tough choices too sometimes, and we're talking about raising taxes, or, you know, Chief Eberhart can't keep his, you know, police department staff because, you know, you know, can't afford to pay police officers enough. We look at two-hundred-seventy-five thousand a year in loss, you know, to support the River Lodge, makes me wonder if, you know, the city is the best entity to run the facility, you know, and if, like, an option three, if we could find someone else to lease it to, or even sell it for that matter, if we could find the right entity that, you know, would continue to operate it and leave it open to the, you know, the community, I think. The, we're not proposing to, like, bulldoze the facility and will no longer be there, and it'll still be the River Lodge, you know, still be available for weddings and conferences or whatever, and, you know, hopefully there may be an operator out there that might be able to operate it more efficiently and probably be in a better position than the city to actually market it, you know, and get more attendees, more renters, you know, maybe more visitors to Fortuna, and maybe be a little more efficient on the, some of the expenses. So I, I wouldn't rule out that option if there is an opportunity for the River Lodge to continue going, you know, and be a, be an asset for the community, but take it off the plate of the city and let someone else, you know, take it over. So, anyway, just my two cents.
Well, I think the majority of the council appears would like to look at an opportunity to see what we're missing with marketing, see what we're missing with events, and to keep it in the spirit and the, the history that we've had there and that it's brought to the city. I did a funeral service there when one of our mayors passed away. I am one of two people that are still here that actually broke ground and did the dirt work to make the foundation to build the River Lodge, and worked on the lighting and the exposed aggregate sidewalks. Literally, the Public Works Department has invested blood, sweat, and tears there, and I've had many an event there that I've attended as well as ones that I've initiated, and it has provided multiple opportunities to showcase Fortuna, as we've heard from other event holders and what that's brought in. So I think it deserves another shake at working out the marketing opportunities and showcasing the fine service that they provide to the event holders, and I would even go so far as to say that I would step out and do spots, radio spots for events like the Craft Fair and Bridal Fair, and so, but anyways, that's my opinion. I don't know, the council consensus?
I would like to propose, oops. I would like to propose that we look into further upgrading, checking outer areas, doing more advertising for it, and see what we can get, see if we can increase our revenue, and kind of take that direction first.
So you want a motion, correct? Of your directive?
Yeah, yes, through, through, through the, yes, I would appreciate a motion, and a motion could be something like to direct staff to return with some sort of enhanced investment in the River Lodge, and that could be physical upgrades up to and including marketing.
So, yeah, I can make a motion that we use option one, but instead of set a status quo that we're going to work to find other ways to market and improve facility usage and tax fees and, and, uh, usage fees.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Motion carries. So, more work begins. Speaking of River Lodge, now that we have direction there, we have a city council business item for authorize the city manager to award River Lodge exterior staining project to Hama Naka Painting Company and establish a maximum contract of one-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand.
Our Public Works Director, Brian Isa, will deliver the staff report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Definitely a timely and related item here. Just for clarification, this is not an upgrade to the facility, this is just standard maintenance to the facility. So what you have before you is an authorization to award a contract for one-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand dollars to Hama Naka Painting for staining of the exterior of the River Lodge. And the staff report here, we tried to lay out a little bit of the history there, both in the decision-making process and, and whether or not, a little ground truthing on whether that bid is appropriate or not. The River Lodge was built in nineteen ninety-eight, to our knowledge, it's not been stained since nineteen ninety-eight. You may remember, as, as part of that, they actually hand dipped every board, like completely submerged and hand dipped every board before they nailed them up, so it's weathered extremely well, but it is at the point where the exterior stain is weathering to the point that it does need to be refreshed regardless of what the council chooses to do with the facility, whether you keep it, whether you offload it to somebody else. The exterior is weathered to the point where it does need to be refreshed. We did put this out to bid, we got two bids. The low bidder was just under a hundred thousand dollars. When we notified them that they were the low bidder, they went, "Oops," and immediately pulled their bid because they realized that they missed something in their spreadsheet. So the second lowest bidder was local contractor Hama Naka Incorporated, Hama Naka Painting, at a hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand dollars. So this project has been on the CIP since twenty-twenty-one, and every year subsequent, it has been readopted as part of the CIP, but there was not funding for the project until twenty-twenty-five, when the Measure E Committee set aside a hundred-and-ninety-thousand dollars explicitly for this project. The city council then approved the budget with a hundred-and-ninety-thousand dollars for this fiscal year, and we're hoping that that will cover everything, including contingencies. It is an appropriate amount, given the size and the scale of the River Lodge, it's also not paint, it is stain, so with paint, you can pressure wash stuff and paint will cover it, stain will not. If you get aggressive with a pressure washer and you score the siding, you're going to see it through the stain. So we've laid out a little bit there about, you know, the appropriateness of the bid, and if awarded, we'll move forward as quickly as we can because we've already been sort of scheduled in with Hama Naka scheduled around other jobs, and they are scheduling around existing events that are scheduled at the River Lodge. So they have been very good at working with us as a contractor, and we're here to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, thanks. Do you have any questions? Okay. Well, I, I do remember the dipping tanks, and they were very large and long because of the boards there. With that...
I make a motion to authorize the...
We have public comment. We will open public comment for this item if there is any. I don't see any, so we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to authorize the city manager to award the River Lodge exterior staining project to Hama Naka Painting Company and establish a not-to-exceed contract amount of a hundred-and-ninety thousand.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
No.
So, motion is adopted. Thank you. Thank you, Brian, Matt. And we come now to our next item of business, a city council authorized, no, long one, study session for the cannabis policy study session.
Mayor Johnson and council members, just as way of background, on February third of this year, under future agenda items, the city council requested a discussion on a cannabis ordinance. Then again, on February eighteenth of this year, city staff presented on prioritizing ordinance development and long-range planning activities. The city council directed staff to prioritize development of a cannabis ordinance again. On April twenty-first, city staff initiated discussion on the city's budget outlook and potential revenue generation options. Retail cannabis was considered as one potential revenue generation option for the general fund. On May fifth, city staff requested a supplemental budget of a little over forty-nine thousand, and that was not approved. Staff then proposed a less expensive, slower-paced option for ninety-six-hundred dollars. And that brings us to today with a study session on cannabis, and we have Mark Lovelace, the Principal Consultant with HDL, and Mark will present on, he'll provide an overview on the cannabis industry, and will be available to answer any of your questions.
Start working? Okay, let me get my presentation going here. Let's see, I guess I've got to get it on the thing first. Okay, great. Thank you for having me. My name is Mark Lovelace. I'm a Senior Policy Advisor for HDL Companies, not a principal as much as I might appreciate that. And prior to working for HDL, I served eight years on the Board of Supervisors here in Humboldt County as we were looking at a coming legalization and the impacts that it could have on our industry and our economy. A little bit about HDL. HDL is a municipal finance consulting firm dedicated to serving local government agencies, and one of our practice areas includes cannabis consulting, where we help cities develop policies and programs for regulating cannabis industry. We also assist cities with implementation and ongoing management and oversight of the cannabis businesses, wants to have them in place. I want to emphasize that we work only with cities, counties, and other public agencies. We have no private sector clients, including within the cannabis industry, so that we remain impartial or agnostic regarding cannabis and legalization. Our goal is to provide the city with the best information possible to support your decision-making process, not to advocate one way or another for a given outcome. The goal of this presentation is to provide your council and the public with an overview of the legal cannabis industry in California and the nearby region, and we want to ensure that everyone involved in the process shares a common baseline understanding of how the licensed industry operates, the different business types, and some of the general issues and considerations to be aware of. The presentation will outline some key policy questions for the councils to consider before you provide direction to staff on how to proceed, and just to affirm also, this presentation is going to focus primarily on retail, though it will have a little bit about other aspects of the industry. I want to start with a brief, brief overview of the cannabis industry and the business types that are allowed by the state. This chart shows the basic license types that exist within the cannabis supply chain, starting with cultivators who grow the plant, also includes manufacturers who convert the plant to other consumable goods, testing laboratories that verify the quality of the product, distributors who move the product from business to business, and retailers who sell cannabis goods to consumers. Cannabis businesses may hold multiple license types and may conduct different types of activities depending upon their business model. There are lots and lots of variations in how the supply chain can work. For example, manufacturing may involve more than one company in different steps of developing that product, but each time, the nature of the product changes, it has to be tested again to make sure that the consumers are aware of the potency level of the product and to ensure that there's no contaminants. Cannabis testing lab operators are required to be independent and cannot have any ownership interest in any other cannabis business type to maintain that objectivity. Moving on to the state and regional environment, looking statewide, this slide shows the number of cannabis licenses issued by the DCC statewide as of August first. I want to note that this is the number of licenses, not businesses. As noted, it's common for businesses to hold multiple license types, and with cultivation in particular, they may hold dozens or even, in some cases, hundreds of licenses under one ownership. As you can see, there's a little over eight thousand cannabis licenses in California currently, but only about eighteen hundred of those are retailers. We include about two-thirds of the microbusinesses in that count because that's typically the proportion of them that include retail as part of their business plan. So all of the product grown, processed, manufactured, and distributed by all of those other cannabis business types has to be sold through those eighteen hundred retailers. Looking at what's happening around the city of Fortuna, this map, as you can see, it shows storefront retailers, the red dots, non-storefront, the blue dots, of which there are none within this area, and the purple Ms. for microbusinesses. There are no cannabis businesses within the city itself, of course, but the DCC shows two retailers in Riodell and one in Carlotta. However, one of the retailers in Riodell has recently closed, even though their license still, is still shown as valid. There's also two microbusinesses operating in the unincorporated area just outside of the city. Both of those operate as non-storefront, delivery-only retailers, so we presume that they are making deliveries to residents within the city. And we're aware that the one retailer in Riodell also conducts deliveries, though, based on a discussion with them, I can't imagine it's a very significant piece of their model in terms of the amount of deliveries they're conducting into the city. Looking further north up towards Eureka, we see ten storefront retailers and seven microbusinesses. Six of those seven include storefront retail as a component, so that's sixteen retailers as an, for an area of roughly forty-five thousand people, or roughly one retailer for every twenty-eight hundred people. Further north, in Arcata and McKinleyville area, there's eight storefront retailers, one non-storefront, delivery-only retailer, and nine big microbusinesses, six of which include retail, so a total of fifteen retailers in that area. The non-storefront, delivery-only retailers are almost all located in Arcata's Alder Grove Industrial Park, which is common for, it's common for storefront retail to be located in commercial districts because they have foot traffic, and for non-storefront, delivery services to be located in light industrial areas because they're prohibited from having customers walk into their business. This table shows all of the jurisdictions in Humboldt County and what they do or don't allow, and as you can see, despite Humboldt County's long history with cannabis, only half of the jurisdictions in the county currently allow for any type of cannabis businesses. Arcata, Eureka, Riodell, and the county allow all types of cannabis, of commercial cannabis businesses, though the cities generally only allow indoor cultivation. Along with Fortuna, the cities of Ferndale, Blue Lake, and Trinidad do not allow any type of cannabis businesses. This kind of split is not at all uncommon. Across California, sixty percent of counties and cities do not allow any type of cannabis businesses. I just realized, Blue Lake is not on here, but Blue Lake also does not allow any businesses. Now, this shows the taxes and tax rates of various jurisdictions. Though Eureka, Arcata, and the county allow all cannabis business types, neither Arcata nor Eureka have any kind of cannabis tax in place, and the county only taxes cultivation. nor Eureka have any kind of cannabis tax in place, and the county only taxes cultivation. The county's cultivation tax is currently set at ten percent of its original rates, which were one dollar, two dollars, three dollars per square foot for outdoor, mixed light, and indoor respectively, which, at their full rate, were already among the lowest in the state. So at their current rate, it's very, very low. Cultivation can also be taxed by gross receipts. While HDL generally recommends rates in the range of one to two percent, some of the most productive cultivation regions in the state have rates at four percent or higher and still have a significant number of businesses that are doing well. So it can really vary what's, you know, by region, what the rates may be. As a note, it's pretty rare for cities or counties to allow cannabis businesses without taxing them. Rare, not unheard of. But there's no other region that I've worked with in California that has a chart like this, where so many cities allow for the businesses but do not have a tax in place. That may be because of Humboldt County's long history with the industry, that we're perhaps in a position more we're trying to hold on to and retain the jobs and economic inputs that are already coming from it rather than to see that additional revenue. But whatever the reason, it is very unique. Moving on to the policy discussion, I want to emphasize again that these are questions that are only intended to cover initial key policy issues for the city to look at. The goal is not to cover every topic related to cannabis because there are so many of them, but rather just to give, again, a solid baseline understanding of the industry and to help guide that discussion. From a high level, regulatory programs can give the city the authority and control over licensing decisions and not leave that only with the state. They can also establish facility design and location requirements, time, place, and manner, just as is common for cities for regulating businesses. The city can impose operating conditions beyond those that are already required by the state. The city can also enhance business accountability by requiring annual inspections and audits. As with any other business, cannabis facilities are typically restricted to certain zones. Industrial uses like cultivation, manufacturing, and testing would likely be allowed in light industrial zones, while storefront retail would likely be allowed in existing commercial retail zones. Again, non-storefront delivery services would likely be in light industrial because, again, there's no foot traffic involved. The city has a variety of different kinds of commercial areas, including neighborhood commercial, retail commercial, commercial thoroughfare, and freeway commercial. And it's not uncommon for cities to allow cannabis stores only in certain kinds of retail zones or to place different requirements on them depending on the zone. For example, a retailer in a freeway-serving commercial area would likely be a larger store with signage that's easier to spot from the highway to be able to attract traffic to that business, whereas a retailer in a neighborhood commercial area would likely have a lower profile with little or no signage so as to make it a little more discreet. The allowable zones and zoning requirements will, of course, be defined by the planning commission and city council through that process and guided with input from the public. Along with the zoning, the state mandates that cannabis businesses be located a minimum of six hundred feet from certain sensitive uses, defined by the state as K-12 schools, commercial daycare centers, and youth centers. Cities have the authority to either extend or reduce the size of these buffers and can actually even eliminate them completely if they so, if they so desire. The city can also recognize additional sensitive uses, such as parks, libraries, houses of worship, or other cannabis businesses, and can also redefine how to measure those setbacks to better address community-specific issues. Some of the common community concerns that cannabis businesses, that come up around cannabis businesses are often associated with public safety, public health, neighborhood and land use protections, and preventing youth access. The goal of a well-designed regulatory program is to impose operating restrictions on the businesses to mitigate these issues, to help address those community concerns. Again, noted, we're going to focus primarily on retailers here. Other business types may have different concerns. The state of California requires that cannabis retailers have licensed security personnel on-site during all hours of operation, twenty-four-hour video surveillance, third-party alarm monitoring systems, and Department of Justice criminal background investigations of all owners prior to licensure. The city could choose to impose additional requirements, such as requiring security guards be present additional hours up to twenty-four-seven, or security patrols when the businesses are closed. The city could require additional site security measures, such as not allowing storefront windows so that people can't see into the business, and securing inventory in a vault at night, other things to help armor the site and make it less attractive to crime. City could also require inspections of the business to ensure ongoing compliance with state and local law. State public health requirements include third-party testing of cannabis, special packaging and product labeling, potency limits, daily purchase limits, and prohibitions on public consumption. Additional standards that the city could adopt would include warning signage, restrictions on visibility into the building, again, with the windows from outside, and dedicated funding of public health programs through cannabis tax revenues. Some cities also will require that cannabis businesses commit to providing funding to local community organizations, providing community service, or giving their employees paid time to volunteer with nonprofit organizations. There's a lot of creativity that can go into ways to address these issues. The state, as noted before, the state requires that all cannabis businesses maintain minimum distances from sensitive uses. The state also requires a mandatory 10:00 PM closure for cannabis retailers. The city would have, could strengthen these restrictions, again, with additional sensitive uses, increasing buffers. Could also impose design standards, exterior lighting standards, landscaping standards, things to make sure that the businesses are a good fit for the community. And that really can vary greatly from city to city. The city can also further limit the hours of operation, such as, you know, only allowing them to be open until 9:00 PM or 8:00 PM instead of the 10:00 PM limit imposed by the state. Though, in my work, I found that most cannabis businesses tend to close earlier, even if they're allowed to be open until 9:00 or 10:00 PM. Generally seems like 7:00 or 8:00 PM is the cutoff for most businesses, even if they're allowed to be open later. Under state law, licensed retailers are prohibited from allowing anyone under twenty-one on the premises unless they have a valid doctor's recommendation for medicinal cannabis and are over eighteen. Only around five percent of cannabis sales currently fall into medicinal cannabis, though some of that is likely because of people who may have a medicinal need but can purchase their cannabis without having to present their doctor's recommendation. Cannabis retailers are required to verify the ID of every person that enters and have security cameras that capture the face of every customer making a transaction. That ID needs to be checked before they can actually go into the retail area. Employees must be present at all times during business hours. They can't walk into the back room to get something, leaving someone unattended in the store. The businesses have to participate in metric, which is the state's track-and-trace system to ensure that all goods are from licensed sources and on the production end, to ensure that all good, that goods are not being diverted into the illicit market. Some cities have also taken efforts to conduct underage decoy programs, or to conduct routine regulatory inspections of facilities, and again, or to dedicate funding for youth prevention services as a way to help protect youth. Revenue generating strategies, there's a range of different ways that cities can generate revenue. The first one I want to start with here is the administrative fees, which, under California law, are limited to cost recovery. The fees can be used to recover all of the city's actual costs for permitting and regulating the industry, including costs for the development of the program itself. So that the city, while there may be an initial outlay in the development of the program, the city, over time, has the ability to recover all of its costs and all of its ongoing costs so that any revenues generated from a cannabis tax or community development, benefit agreements could be used for, to generate general revenue for the city to use as it sees fit. Community benefit agreements, or operational agreements, as mentioned before, are negotiated agreement with the business where the city works with the business to get the business to agree to dedicate a fee of some amount that can be structured very, very different, flat fee, percentage of revenue, varying models there, as a licensing requirement with the revenue available for, again, for general government purposes. HDL generally recommends a voter-approved tax as the best measure, the best method for generating revenue, though we do recognize that that can be a timely, or a time-consuming process. We did a very brief analysis just to give a general range of the revenues that the city may be able to generate through a tax on cannabis retailers. This assumes one or two retailers with a combined revenue in the three-point-five million to five million dollar range within the city. And that's assuming that the retailer or retailers within the city would be able to capture seventy percent of sales from the population of Fortuna and the surrounding unincorporated area, with the other thirty percent going to those non-storefront delivery services that are, you know, currently delivering into the city. From this, we anticipate the city could receive between one hundred and eighty to three hundred and twenty thousand in cannabis tax revenue, depending on the rates. Again, this is very rough estimate only. Actual gross receipts can vary depending upon the business models of the, of the businesses. This range assumes, this estimate assumes a range of assumptions for the size of the customer base and total sales, ranging from, with rates ranging from four percent to seven percent. The city would also generate an additional, around eighty-two thousand dollars or so from sales and transaction taxes on those purchases. So, moving to that policy discussion, the city currently prohibits cannabis businesses, and unless the city takes action otherwise, that existing prohibition stands. The only question the city needs to consider at this time is whether or not there's a desire for change. If the city decides to keep things the way they are, then all the other questions fall by the wayside. But if the city chooses to move forward with allowing cannabis businesses, there'd be a number of other questions that you'd have to work through. First off, which business types would the city want to allow? Storefront retail, delivery-only, cultivation? Those are the three big ones that most discussions tend to focus around that. Some places choose to allow cultivation but don't want to allow any retail, some want delivery-only and no storefront, some want storefront-only, no delivery. It really can vary greatly among those. And then, of course, there's all the other business types that can be allowed. Does the city want to limit the number of businesses? In most cases, the vast majority of cities that we've worked with tend to put a cap on the number of businesses and say, we think that two or three is a good fit for the size of the city, or in some cases, there's no cap, and the number of businesses can, is just limited by the free market in those cases. Does the city want to impose a revenue measure? Would that be a voter-approved tax or operating agreements, as discussed before? Again, all these questions apply only if the city wants to move forward with establishing a cannabis program, and all of that would typically be informed by a robust community process to get guidance and info from the public to help make, you know, make sure that the industry, whatever parts of it you do want to allow, are the best fit possible within your, within your city. I want to talk very briefly about the broader picture of what's happening with cannabis industry in California, because with Humboldt County in particular, this has been such a part of our history up here, and we've certainly have seen the dramatic changes that have happened due to legalization. And it's very easy to just say, well, the industry's dying, therefore, why are we even having this discussion? And over the past years, we've all seen a lot of articles and headlines like these, all saying essentially that California's grand experiment with legalization has been a failure, the industry's collapsing, prices are too high, businesses are closing, and that the illicit market is stronger than ever. There's a lot of truth in these headlines. California's regulatory program is very complex, and the cumulative, multi-layered state and local taxes can easily exceed forty percent, which is, I think we could all agree, that's a high tax rate regardless. A lot of cannabis businesses are struggling, many are failing, but as you'll see in this, a lot of that is likely to continue for some time. However, most of the articles tend to place the blame solely at the feet of the state, saying that the excise taxes regulations are just too onerous, and I'm not denying that they are onerous, but that ignores some basic questions about supply and demand that I think really need to be looked at as a part of that discussion. The data actually shows that the industry's not failing, it's still growing, both in terms of production and the size of the market, but the number of cultivation businesses supplying that market is falling dramatically, as fewer larger growers take a disproportionate share, more of the retail end is falling into the hands of large chains, and we're seeing production come down to match the size of the market. Before legalization, cannabis grown in Humboldt County supplied all of California and the U.S., not by itself, but the market was across the nation. There was no meaningful difference between cannabis being grown for legitimate medicinal needs versus cannabis being grown for illegal recreation or adult use, and cannabis being grown for the illegal export to other states. Growers in California and Humboldt County supplied a nationwide market of some three-hundred and forty million people. Since legalization, licensed growers in Humboldt County in California can only sell product within the state, so that brings the maximum market size down to thirty-nine million. But sixty percent of cities and counties still don't allow licensed cannabis sales, so the portion that's, that's available to licensed growers comes down to only forty percent, around sixteen million people. That's less than five percent of what the market used to be pre-legalization. Keep in mind, too, that that's the total population, the percentage of the population that actually uses cannabis on a regular basis is much smaller, around thirteen to twenty percent of that, of the total population. This table shows a quick snapshot of the number of cultivation licenses, their total acreage, and their production capacity over time. These are just, these dates are just ones that we happen to have full data for. Bear in mind, the number of licenses, again, doesn't reflect the number of businesses. But as you can see, the production capacity grew to many times over through 2023. The actual size of the market in California was estimated at two-point-five million pounds. So when you're growing, cultivating sixteen million pounds, or have the capacity to grow sixteen million pounds, that's over six times the size of the market. There, the market just isn't big enough for everyone that wanted to get a piece of it. This table shows the actual amount of cannabis entering the licensed market as reported by the DCC. These figures are obviously far, far lower than the potential capacity shown in the previous slide. The market, again, the market isn't big enough for everyone that wants to get a piece of it, and there's been a huge adjustment between the size of a market that was trying to supply the entire nation to the size of the market that's trying to supply a portion of California. And that also has to now account for, you know, for Humboldt County, the fact that there's so many other places, such as Santa Barbara and Ventura County, that have developed substantial cultivation sectors. Even though the volume of production has increased every year, the average price per pound has decreased, but the, so the total volume, the total value has actually stayed roughly the same at around a billion dollars. So we're seeing production come up, but the total value of the industry is staying roughly the same because of the drop in pricing. Both the industry and the cultivation sector are also increasingly consolidated into fewer and larger ownerships. In fact, as can be seen in this table, I have a lot of information, so maybe you can't see it, but this shows the large, the twenty largest growers in California. Those twenty businesses alone have the capacity to supply the entire market for the state, both licensed and unlicensed, legal and illicit sales. So that's twenty businesses that could handle the entire market without anyone else participating. That kind of market consolidation is, for good or for bad, that is normal, and it's not at all unique to the cannabis industry. As a comparable, the brewing industry, according to the Brewers Association, which represents small, independent craft brewers in the United States, there are some nine thousand seven hundred breweries in the U.S., and of these, over nine thousand five hundred are microbreweries or craft breweries. That's ninety-eight percent of brewers that fall into that category. And as someone who likes a nice craft IPA, I'm like, yay, craft brewers crushing it. That ninety-eight percent of breweries controlled just thirteen percent of the market. The rest is controlled by major breweries like Anheuser-Busch, Molson Coors, Constellation Brands, Heineken, plus imports. The wine industry is similarly stratified, those ownership structures tend to be different. I recall back when we were looking at coming legalization in Humboldt County, a lot of growers talked about how Humboldt County could become the Napa Valley of cannabis, but as was pointed out at that time, Napa Valley only produces four percent of but as was pointed out at that time, Napa Valley only produces 4% of the wine grapes in California. So if you want to be the Napa Valley of cannabis, recognize someone else is going to be the E&amp;J Gallo of cannabis, and that's kind of what we see with these models of consolidation within these industries. The DCC recently released a report that found only about 40% of all cannabis consumed in California comes from licensed sources, but that would appear to support the claims from some of those headlines that talk about how 60% of the cannabis sales are still in the illicit market. These two things go together. If you look at other figures from that same report, 57% of cities and counties do not allow any retail cannabis businesses. Over half of California counties and cities don't allow any type of cannabis business, and only 46% of counties and cities allow any cannabis businesses at all. Rounding these figures a bit, this is what I see, is that roughly 60% of counties and cities do not allow any cannabis, licensed cannabis retailers, and roughly 60% of sales remain in the illicit market. It's not because of taxes, regulations, though those obviously have a huge impact on this industry, it's due to the lingering prohibition. True, 60% of counties and cities doesn't necessarily correlate with 60% of the actual population, but in a very general sense, I think these two figures, again, are hard Looking at a map of California, you can see there's huge pockets where there are no retailers within an hour or multiple hours' drive for a person to be able to get to their nearest licensed store. 1,800 cannabis retailers in California equals one retailer for every 21,670, 667 people. Compare that with one tobacco retailer, or excuse me, compare that to over 23,000 places to buy tobacco, or vapes, or cigarettes, or over 80,000 places to buy alcohol. So by comparison, there's one location for every 500 people in California to buy beer or wine, compared with one for every 21,000 to buy cannabis. So simply put, there's really just way too much supply for the amount of demand, and there's not enough avenues to get the product into the hands of consumers. So the predictable result of that is that the average prices in every category of cannabis product have dropped significantly since 2020. It's a buyer's market. Prices for some categories have fallen by over 40%, with an average decline of over 35%. So the takeaway here is that cannabis has never been cheaper for consumers. That's a good thing from a consumer's perspective, it's not a good thing if you're in the industry. But it is really difficult to look at a price decline like that and to support the argument that, that higher tax, higher prices due to taxes are what's pushing consumers into the illicit market. There has to be other things that are going on here, which is what I wanted to get at with this presentation. So, again, that's just to give a little bit of a backdrop that, you know, I hope that's not too much of a distraction from the primary topic that we have here about what's happening in the industry. So, glancing over that one, I want to get back to the, oops, the key policy decisions. Hopefully, that's still up there for you, and ask if you have any questions.
Do we have any questions for Mark?
Yeah. Got a question. I'm just curious with the, of the counties and cities that do permit it, how many of them, that have like cannabis sales fees or taxes, how many of them were voter-approved taxes, and how many of them were just community benefit agreements? Or do you have a rough guesstimate?
I don't have a definitive figure on that. I'd say there's a slight edge for voter-approved taxes, somewhat above 50%, but it's not a dramatic one. I would say also that it tends to be kind of regional, tend to see if, if a city is looking at moving into allowing cannabis businesses, they tend to look around and see what other neighboring cities do, and whoever was first to the table, if they got a, did community benefit agreements, then, you know, there's a tendency to say, "Well, let's go that route." So you see, tend to see kind of clusters. Yeah, not solely, but it will be pretty common to see in one area, there's more community benefit agreements, and there are taxes, and in another area, there's more taxes and there are community benefit agreements.
And I think you would, so you usually recommend the voter-approved tax. Have you, have you seen issues with the community benefit agreement, like drawbacks, or why you might recommend one over the other?
There's a few issues with community benefit agreements. One, they can be timely, or time-consuming and expensive for the business to get them in place, because it requires a lot of negotiation, which typically tends to involve attorneys, which are generally not cheap. So that can just add an additional expense upfront to get them in place. There's also, because they have to be negotiated, there tends to be differences from one business to another, and as soon as one business becomes aware that another business got a sweeter deal than they did, there's a tendency to want to renegotiate, and so it can be problematic in that way. There's also, one thing that we've seen is businesses that are, when you have a competitive situation where there's, you know, 10 business applicants for two available licenses, and so they're all trying to put in deal sweeteners to be the one that the city chooses, it's not uncommon for a small local business, or maybe a first-time applicant, to be a little too hopeful about their ability to deliver, and, yeah, after a couple of years, you may have them coming back and saying, "We're just not able to make good on what we promised the city," and again, wanting to renegotiate that. There are other issues that can come up around development agreements, depending upon the way they're put forward by the city, where there are some cities that have put it forward simply as, "Here's what you have to agree to, there is no negotiation," and that could be problematic. Voter-approved tax, of course, is a little burdensome on the city initially in terms of getting it in place, developing the tax, putting it on the ballot, but general tax, when put forward as a general tax that only requires a 50% plus-one majority for approval, they have an over 90% approval rate. And when put forward as a general, or as a special tax that requires a 2/3 majority, that approval rate comes down to, I think, a little below 50%.
Any other questions?
Yeah, two questions. On the slide that you had where it had dashes for all of Humboldt and Eureka and Arcata, how are they, is it just treating it as a sales tax for them?
They would still collect sales tax from all those purchases, and plus transactions and use taxes. So cumulatively, where the tax rates are for those two cities, I think they'd probably be getting, I'm thinking around 2.5% to 3%, is that about right, from those two existing taxes? But, again, my first thought when I saw that was, you know, Humboldt County was in a very different situation than most places around California, in that it was more a matter of retaining an industry that we already have, rather than allowing a new one in. And so I think that may have been part of the thinking in terms of, you know, not putting forward a revenue measure.
And then, the other question is, you said the city can recuperate the cost of, is like, does the permit fees and the processes that go through the retailers slash permit users to recoup that those costs?
That would be a matter of the, the city doing a fee study to determine what are the, what's the time that has gone into the development of the program itself, which is then recouped by all the, everyone, all the beneficiaries of that program. Some of the businesses that actually get licenses and operate, they're benefiting from the fact that the program exists, and so that would be a part of their permit structure, would be to have, you know, to be paying that fee over time. The initial application process would be a fee for each applicant, and that can be done either through a, you know, a fee study that determines this is how much time we think it's going to take to process each one. Sometimes cities just put in place where they have to put a deposit, and the city will just bill time for, you know, the planning department or whoever all is involved with that, against that deposit, and if they exceed that deposit, they have to put in more. So there's different ways that that can be handled. I should note that the one thing that cannot be recouped through fees is the development of a tax measure. If the city wanted to put a tax measure on the ballot, the city would have to shoulder that cost itself, though of course you could recoup, recoup that through tax revenues once the measure's in place.
Then, along that line, with the, you said it can't go over for profit, so if you expected, let's say, 10 businesses at the beginning, and we split it up over 10 businesses, but after the 10th business, the majority of the cost, which is the initial starting of the process, would be taken care of, and it would just be small permit fees, so it would just be lowering permit fees at that time, or would it continue through that process of what it would have been for the first 10?
The, the fee study would be based upon a number of assumptions in terms of, you know, how many businesses the city intends to allow, the term over which, you know, those costs would be recouped. And I'm, I don't conduct fee studies myself for HDL, so I'd, you know, have to turf that question to somebody else for a more detailed answer, but that would be, there would be different things that would go into that, such as, you know, again, separate fees for the initial permitting process. And I should clarify that, we're talking about the licensing process, because just like any other business, they're still going to have to go through the land use permitting, and, you know, there's going to be things that are just, you know, any other business has to go through with the building department, and those fees would be separate, but it'd just be the fees for actually going through the licensing process itself, getting selected, making sure that their application is complete, that they've addressed everything that the city requires them to address. And so there'd be, there may be, you know, one bundle of businesses or applicants for that process, and that would be what the permit cost would be based on for that, and then you have, once the businesses place, the other fees that apply only to the ones that actually got permits and get up and running.
Do you have anything? Is there any public comment on this item? Yes, sir.
I have a question, really. I noticed on one of your charts up here that it had a graph, and, and I don't remember all the subjects, but Riadell was one line, and it said two something, and then the county...
Excuse me. We don't usually have an, audience doesn't have an inter-
Had a 10C, and a 20C, and a 30C. I don't know what C meant.
Through, through the mayor, usually, public comment is directed to the city council, and then, and then the city council will then ask staff a question. So if you could just direct your comments to the city council, that would be most appreciated.
I believe that's cents.
Cent's?
Yes.
Pennies?
Ye- yes.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Yes, we don't usually have an interrogatory with the presenters. Any other public comment?
Good evening, mayor and council. I would recommend the council really studies cannabis a lot before you consider allowing, say, cultivation in your county, or in your city. The county right now is not budgeting any cannabis excise tax, because we can't depend on it, and we're currently actually at zero for excise tax, so the, this board of supervisors has, is not charging the community, because they're not paying. We're outstanding $14 million that is owed for excise tax, and the amount of cannabis cultivators that are not cultivating right now and still following their permits are large. There's, I think there are currently around less than 600 farms in the unincorporated area. It is something that is very difficult right now to budget, to depend on budgetarily, and I know Riadell had thought that they, it would be something that they could really depend on, and it did help them for a while. They have one cultivator there, that, in the business park, that does pay, but is not something that they are able to really count on any longer either to, to help them budgetarily. And the two dispensaries, they had one closed, and they have one currently left. So it's a very volatile business in Humboldt. It is, I think, Mr. Lovelace is absolutely correct in saying the illicit business is large, especially in the Santa Barbara area, where they do a lot of indoor cultivation there, and the illicit business down there is supplying a lot. It's pretty scary budgetarily right now for cultivation, and it's a nightmare for the county budgetarily. And we have out, for the planning and building department, we have outstanding bills that are, it just has been, you know, not great in the last five years since I've been a supervisor, and I'm going to be out of order for just a minute, but it was originally, it did supply Humboldt County with a lot of money, and was very fruitful, but that is not current day, nor has it been the last five years.
Thank you.
I know, I'm up here in the chief police uniform, but just speaking as a private citizen of Fortuna. I know that our city has revenue issues. I know that it's a tough decision to decide what direction to go. I would just ask that, when you weigh this big decision, that remember you're up here representing your constituents, the people of Fortuna. So I'd ask that you really consider beyond your own personal views, and think about the people that you interact with, and what direction they'd want you to go.
Thank you, and I think what, whatever transpires will happen after a robust public presentation and comment. Any other public comment?
I was actually surprised and disappointed that this was on the council agenda tonight. What you just said about having the public involved, I was thinking that before it came back to the council, and before there was a presentation, before you guys decided on something, that we would have some kind of a big public meeting, because there are very few people in Fortuna know that this is happening tonight. I have a lot of questions on the presentation, for instance. My business deals in big ticket items. We do subdivisions, we do public works for public agencies, cities, counties, whatever it is. We do housing, we do remodels. $5 million in income is a good year. Do you know, for you non-business owners, how much product $5 million is? Somehow, I just can't believe that that much money is going to go through a retail business in Fortuna. $5 million, you guys, that's a lot of money. And then there was another slide that said something about, on the bottom, it had $1 million, as if that's the income that was coming through the state. I couldn't follow that one, so if that's $1 million, but we're going to have $5 million in Fortuna, I didn't understand that correlation, so maybe that question could be answered so that I have a better understanding of that. But you guys, $5 million is not going to happen, I'm telling you. Think long and hard about this. Get out there and ask the public, have some public input, some public meetings, not a council meeting just like this. Advertise, 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 and get your people in here. Thank you.
Well, I had a, I would hope, and I had talked about this before, about prior to adopting anything or making a big decision, that we would have a public meeting, the public come in, and whether it's here or at River Lodge, and I think we still have that scheduled someplace out there. I'm not positive.
No, you do not have anything scheduled at River Lodge. Quite frankly, River Lodge is audio equipment and isn't something that is easily dealt with, so holding a public meeting in city council chambers is the easiest thing for us to do at this point in time. Really, this was a study session for you to determine if you want to continue moving on, and we can absolutely 100% have all the public meetings you want to have, but staff does need direction on whether you want to continue on through this process.
So, I'm, I think we need to continue, at least, exploring the option, the way I look at it, I've never partook once, but even going through the slides today, realizing how much of a restricted industry that it is, that even probably more than the alcohol industry, and I, Mr. Stevens over there can probably tell you, that's probably a highly recommended industry as well, but to do something because we just don't like it personally, I want to make sure that we're not exploring that option. Like, I would, keep coming back- Like, I would keep coming back to when I went to Arkansas to visit my family in Arkansas, they have counties that don't sell alcohol. Everybody drove to the next county that wanted to buy alcohol. So it's just because your certain county doesn't like something, or the city doesn't like something, doesn't mean that people in that city or town are not going to partake in that, and I think we're just missing out on whatever revenue that might be, because the industry will provide that industry. I personally believe it should be a market-type thing, where the market says what should be out there, because that's how business works. But I definitely want to keep exploring the options and looking into what we can find out.
Being up here, we're five people here. I, for some, a decision this big, I don't necessarily think it needs to be made by five people. We are supposed to be representing the whole city, everybody. I've talked to a lot of people. It tends to be split, you know, from what I'm hearing. A lot of them want it, a lot of them don't. So it would be very hard to make a decision for the whole city with doing this. I personally, even though it's a ways out, I would almost rather put this to a vote on the ballot. I don't know if that's, if that's an option or not, but I just feel that five people making a decision this crucial for the whole city is a big thing, especially when it is so split between, you know, what I'm hearing out there. That's just my personal opinion.
Any other comment from?
I think that it's important that we talk to people and listen to what they have to say, but not everybody would choose to tell us how they want to use this business. I think that the majority of the people that we'll listen to will be those that are against it, and those that are using it are already getting their product from other areas. So having the flexibility of bringing it into the town of Fortuna for those that already are partaking in it, it's an option, and I would like to see if Chief Everhart would have a conversation with the chief of Eureka, and see what their crime rate has been like since they increased. Because, I mean, I drive through Broadway every day, and I see all of those front stores, and I don't want my town to look like that, but I also don't want to miss an opportunity of bringing in a business or two that would provide the service that the individuals in Fortuna that choose to partake are driving somewhere else and getting that, and then we're not getting the revenue income coming in.
Yeah, I think, I think those are all good points. I think, you know, as a council, we do sometimes have to put ourselves in a position to make a tough decision for the sake of the city. I mean, I definitely believe it's fair and valuable that we get more community input, and, you know, and we have some sort of public workshops, so we can kind of really understand what exactly are the concerns. You know, is it, like Carla said, you know, just gaudy signage, that, you know, it's embarrassing that, you know, that we just don't want it advertised as much, or, you know, location, or is it people, we don't want it here because, you know, what? Or, you know, or to Carla's point, you know, maybe there are a lot of people that would be in favor of it, or less likely to speak out. I think from my perspective, you know, I, I'm looking at the potentially couple, few hundred thousand a year in revenue it could bring the city, and if people are already going to be using it and going elsewhere to get it, or to our consultants, you know, point, you know, there could be, you know, because there are a lack of options, there could be a sizable, you know, kind of black market, that, you know, they're presumably using stuff that hasn't been state-tested, or, you know, regulated or taxed, and, you know, it could be, there could be some public benefit in having a legal venue. But again, from my own perspective, I think I would probably tend to be in favor of it just for the sake of the revenue. And, you know, again, just my own kind of libertarian leanings, you know, it's a free country, and you know, people should be able to make their own adult choices. But again, I, I think, you know, if it were up to me, and I could just decide what to do, I would probably want to, you know, authorize it somewhere in like a discreet location with signage that is not like so in-your-face and embarrassing, you know? But again, I'm only one person, one opinion, and I think I would like to kind of continue the conversation, but yeah, have, try and figure out some form where we can get some more specific public feedback on, you know, what all the concerns are. So that, you know, maybe there is a way to, some compromise to be had, and some way to address, you know, you know, the concerns, and weigh the pros and cons.
Okay, well, again, like you said, I'm only one out of five, and we need more than just these five people to weigh in on things. I'm looking, we see the sales tax receipts, which I think was like 45 to 60, somewhere's in there, for just the Bradley Burns, and to put a special tax on, I mean, we could do that, but then you got to have somebody that can go around and gather the data, check the receipts, invoice the business, collect before they spend all their money, because they spent it to open up. And there's no guarantee that that special tax is going to return anything, actually, and it probably won't return anything close to what you're counting on. So, I mean, we've seen the businesses that have quit in Eureka and Arcata, and so we don't know how long they'll last. And I'm not hanging a lot on this as a revenue generator, other than 45 to 60,000. And if you, one of the reasons that some of the cities haven't done it is because what you would take in, you'd end up creating a job for one and a half people, and then they would spend that money to pay, to have them collect all that information. So I'm not sure about that. But I do think we need to have a meeting with the public, somewhere, somehow, some way, someplace. And if this is where we have the best AV stuff now, it'll be here. So I think we need to schedule that out there someplace, before we make any kind of a decision.
Well, as I think your council is aware, our community development director is on leave, and staff is short over there, to say the least, and I'm doing my best to do long-range planning. And so as your, you know, I need, at this point, this doesn't feel particularly clear on the direction that the council's providing, so it would be helpful to have a motion and some clarification on whether your council is willing to spend some additional dollars to have that public meeting, because quite frankly, facilitated meetings tend to go more seamlessly. You gather input, and then that input can come back to your council in various, in another presentation, but having some level of facilitation would be helpful, and then having somebody that's more of an expert in cannabis can also be helpful, too.
I think that's something that we should do, then.
Is there a motion from the city council?
I'm just saying that, and then we're going to ask for a motion.
How much money are you talking?
It depends, if we're only talking about, like, a community workshop, I mean, that, it just depends. We can talk about anywhere from probably 10 to $45,000, depending on how far you want to go.
For one public workshop?
No, you, well, it's also about potentially moving through the entire process. So you can probably, I, you know, again, I can bring something back, a supplemental budget request, I could bring something back with some more finite numbers, but it's not going to be $2,000.
Well, one way or the other, if we're going to do it, I mean, if we're going to have the public meeting, we've got to have a facilitator and the material to bring. So we need to provide funding for that. So, do we want a director to come back with, do a study, come back with a number?
I make a motion you come back with a supplemental budget request, and what that would look like, and give us a better number.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. So, that brings us to the end of this part. Next is the city manager's report.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Johnson, and council members. Over the last several weeks, I have met with staff regarding the ad hoc presentation today on the River Lodge on multiple occasions. As I just mentioned, the community development director is on leave, and there are a number of items that are continuing to move forward, such as the senior planner recruitment and the building inspector recruitment as well. In addition, you may recall that the state Housing and Community Development Department did submit a letter to the city stating that they'd like to see our housing element implementation completed, and Plan West is now helping to wrap that up, because we did promise the state that we would complete that expeditiously. Myself, Brian Issa, and Jason Johnson met with the Fortuna Cemetery District to discuss water usage at the Sunrise Cemetery. I received a complaint about significant water usage at Sunrise Cemetery, and staff did look at water usage for the cemetery, and it was significant. And so we met with the cemetery, and the district will work to reduce their water consumption. And as a note, I learned that the city of Fortuna provides free water service to the cemetery district. I also met with local city managers to discuss sales tax, and particularly, sales tax sharing agreements, just in case an Amazon fulfillment center comes to Humboldt County at some point in time. That's important, because Amazon has, in other areas, been playing communities against each other, and the cities that have come together to talk about sales tax sharing agreements have fared better and are typically slightly more successful. So that was a topic of conversation. I attended the Cal Cities Redwood Empire Division meeting on Friday, August 22nd. I met with Brendan Byrd from HCOG to review the regional housing allocation needs determination, and so you will be receiving, also known as RENA, you'll be receiving a RENA presentation in the fall. We also had a meeting with EMC Team Civic X to discuss the polling for a potential sales tax measure, and one of the items that came up was that, based on the, what's happening at the federal level, sentiment on any kind of sales tax may change if polling were to be done in the fall. So there's a recommendation to start polling in the spring, closer to November 2026. In addition, I did send them a brief email inquiring about whether there was a cannabis sales tax measure placed on the November 2026 ballot at the same time. And so that will also be a topic of discussion when we meet again, because what I wouldn't want to see is that the ballot is overly full and takes away from the general sales tax measure that has the ability to generate more revenue. Also met with your study council in 221 meetings to review the HDL cannabis education presentation that you received today. I met with the McLean Foundation to receive an update on the pool, and that is continuing. And in fact, there is an RCR PD meeting tomorrow to talk more about the pool. And I met with the mayor, our city attorney, and Royal Crest Management to discuss mobile home rent stabilization, and hear their perspective on what has transpired in terms of rent increases. And I do anticipate bringing a study session item to your city council on Monday, September 15th, to begin that discussion on mobile home rent stabilization. That concludes my staff report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for city manager?
Just based on your conversation with the management or owners of the mobile home park, would you have any sense on whether they might voluntarily agree to some sort of long-term lease agreement with their tenants, as far as like some multiple years out in the future, as far as rent increases? If that would kind of alleviate the need of us to dictate?
Thank you, Councilmember Stevens. That's actually a great question, because one of the items that the store's management brought to us was an MOU between the mobile home parks and the city of Rancho Cordova. It was a 10-year MOU in which they could only increase the mobile home rents by CPI, and then they could pass on some capital improvement costs, and that was all outlined in the MOU. So I do believe there is a potential opportunity for some sort of MOU option versus the city council adopting an ordinance. That will be one of the options presented in your study session staff report.
Any other questions? Okay, well, thank you. Is there any future agenda items? Okay, well, we'll look at council member reports, and starting with Councilmember Conley.
Oral comments.
Oh, I forgot, oral comments from the public, it got moved down again. Is there any items not on the agenda that people would like to make a comment on?
My question is, is this going to be status quo? You're always going to have the oral comments at the end of the meeting? I don't know the answer to that, but I think you're going to lose anyone who wants to come and talk to the council if they have to sit through a two-hour meeting. Sometimes they're shorter, but the whole idea of having oral comments in the beginning is so people can come and address the council and go on with their evening, and I think you're going to lose the very few who do come to comment.
Any others? Okay, well, we will close public comment and move on to council reports. Councilmember Conley.
Thank you. Nothing official to report. Did go through the, kind of, one of the last events of the season here. Being a Hobson Humboldt member, committee member, it was a good event, it had good weather. I know we have one more big event coming up in Apple Harvest, and again, just thanking the staff that puts that on, the city workers and the park workers out there, street workers, everything seems to go seamless, like they don't have an issue, but I know that they're working long hours doing it, and they make the city run, so we couldn't do it without them, so I appreciate it.
Councilmember Diaz.
Thank you, mayor. I had a meeting last week with RCA. There was no action or item to discuss. It was a very, very quick meeting, but I did, wanted to make a note that we need an alternate for that committee, because they asked to make sure that there's an alternate in case I never, or I'm not available to attend, so that they will have a quorum. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. And Councilmember Stevens?
I went to a redact meeting. Nothing super significant. There was a presentation from a startup Humboldt business incubator up in Arcata. Seemed kind of interesting. Kind of wish that we had something like that here in Fortuna, so. But as far as official redact business, I don't know, there's still some work on the bylaws to help make it easier for them to get a quorum with fewer members. Like, that's been an issue, a lot of missed meetings, because there are so many, so many members, but so many people that don't make it, and so I think hopefully they will get that fixed in the near future.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Protem Trent.
Well, since I was out of town for the last two weeks, I have nothing to report.
Okay, well, thanks. And I also attended the Redwood Division meeting at River Lodge, as I said, and it was a great time with all the different cities coming together, and a presentation on wildfire safety and building codes, and building standards and methods, landscaping methods, things to keep the fire from spreading easily and lodging up against the house, or building whatever it be, a business, a barn. And then we had a tour of clandestines and a reception at the depot museum, and followed that up with a dinner with about 20, 24, 25 people at Los Casuelas, and it was a good evening. So I thank all those that attended, and those that came from out of the area. I did have an HCOG meeting with the discussion with the Housing and Community Development Department on how they develop their regional housing... housing needs analysis numbers. And then they brought those numbers forward and said it's up to you guys to figure out how to distribute them. So that was the next thing that was going to happen and that may be why it took a while to get the numbers. We had a presentation from Caltrans on the local shop projects, which are state-owned on the highway projects. And there are numerous of those. Doesn't appear to have affected the monies for STIP projects. They're still out there. But we will see a lot of construction as if we didn't already have a lot going on right now. We also revamped some of the TDA rules to make them more in line with what the, our local auditor and the state would like to see. The last thing we covered was the operational work plan, which covers, it's kind of like our budget. It's what's going to happen and how it's going to be paid for. And we had to make an amendment to that. But as with so many of the amendments that have taken place over the last three or four years, it was because we got another grant of HCOG and we had to adopt it into the budget. So we have money for a Lolita Safe Routes to School study and plan and for a tribal connectivity plan for tribal roads and such. And that was pretty much my last two weeks. As we talked about the meeting with HDL and Mr. Lovelace earlier and with stores and such. So that's all I have to report out at this time.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion, if we have all in favor, say aye.
Aye.